Thank you. I'd like to call this exciting meeting to order for August 7, 2017. We have a lot of special guests here, but right now, I want to welcome everybody and invite Bobby up to please lead us in the invocation. So everybody, please stand for that. And then after that, I am going to have the Jeff GRC Little League All-Stars lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Bobby?
Gosh, Jesus God, we thank you for this day, Lord. We invoke your presence on this meeting. We ask you to be with each and every person in our council, be with them, watch over them, keep a hedge of protection around them. And also, God, we always ask you to pray, we always pray for our staff, for our city. Ask you to pray for the mayor, be with him, watch over him. God, we ask you to help us continually to fight for unity in our community. We want also, God, thank you for these young men that are here today that played on this team. We were awful proud of them, God, and we want you to be with them, be with their parents, let them know how much they appreciate what they're doing. We pray that they continue to play baseball, if that's their will, whatever they do, we pray that they'll stay in our community, help our community grow, and hopefully, Lord, we'll continue to do the things to make this a great community for them to live in. God bless each and every person present tonight. We ask you, God, also to pray for the special event we have as a recognition for Andre Shelby tonight. Be with, we want to make sure we pray for them. Pray for this recognition, God. We're also all very proud. And God, just ask you to be with us as a community, God. We also, Lord, know there's a lot of sickness, a lot of death, a lot of things going on. So, God, we ask you to continue to be with the least, the last, and the lost. And, God, we pray for our first responders, be with them and watch over them, keep them safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Have the Jeff GRC All-Stars please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let it allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Guys, stay up here for just a second. We are so proud of you guys. How was your season?
Good.
Good. I think it was outstanding to make it all the way to the championship game. We're so proud of you all. I'd like to start at this end, and if you'd just introduce and maybe say what position you played, it would be awesome. We'll start with you.
My name is Jeff Phillips, and I mainly play third baseman, shortstop.
Awesome.
My name is Peter Stewart, and I play right fielder, pitch.
My name is Jacob Harbison, and I play left fielder.
My name is Ryan Crawford, and I play second baseman.
My name is Andrew Schaefer, and I play centerfield.
My name is Cole Christopher, and I play third pitcher.
My name is Edgar Foxley, and I play a pitcher, and I'm second.
My name is Aiden Eby, and I play bullpen catcher, sometimes catcher.
Wow.
My name is Zach Ock, and I play catcher.
My name is Gavin Crell, and I play catcher.
My name is Lucas White, and I play left fielder.
That's awesome. Will you all please join me in a round of applause for these fine young ones? Guys, you can have a seat. Thank you so much, and for representing the city of Jeffersonville, you really did us proud. Thank you. We're going right into, we have a special recognition tonight for Andre Shelby. And we have a resolution for the common council, and we'll also have a proclamation from Mayor Mike Moore. At this time, welcome Andre. It is just a pleasure to meet you, and thank you for the service you have given us and all that you've done to represent our city. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Ron Ellis, which he has got the proclamation or the resolution, and then we have a little award.
You know, I had never met a gold medal winner before in my life, especially a gold medal of the World Olympics. And, you know, I really don't know what it would feel like to be number one in the world. But we have this young man. A young man that was raised up in our community in Jeffersonville, at the Jeff High School, played sports here in Jeffersonville. And, you know, we never know where life is going to take us. But I know that God has been with him every step of the way, and I am very proud to be a friend of his and a friend of his family. So I would like to introduce this resolution. The resolution, and I'd like to read this resolution.
I was Stewart, thank you.
A resolution recognizing gold medal winner Andre Shelby by the Common Council of the City of Jeffersonville, Clark County, Indiana. Whereas Jeffersonville, Indiana is the hometown of many remarkable athletes, accomplished scholars, and successful business people. Whereas it is the hometown of only one Olympic gold medal winner, Paralympic Games gold medalist Andre Shelby. Andre was born in Jeffersonville in 1968. Andre graduated from Jeffersonville High School in 1985. Andre was an accomplished athlete throughout his youth in Jeffersonville. One week after graduating from Jeffersonville High School, Andre joined the United States Navy. He is the father of two daughters, the son of Jeffersonville natives, and a brother, uncle, cousins of many of our city's finest residents. Andre served our country for eighteen and a half years until he was injured in a motorcycle accident in 2004, which confined him to a wheelchair. Andre refused to allow his disability to stop him from exhibiting his tenacity and commitment to excellence in an undertaking he chose. He took up archery and began to compete fervently. In 2016, Andre made the United States Paralympic Archery Team. He traveled to Rio as the eleventh seed in a twelve-person field. Andre left Rio with a gold medal. He won the Olympic competition. He won the Olympic competition by defeating Italy's Alberto Simonele, 144 to 143. Andre was the first African-American to ever win a gold medal in the Paralympics on that day as well. Andre's life and accomplishments in the face of adversity are a testament to his family, his friends, his faith, and we hope in some ways the lessons he learned while spending his youth with us here in Jeffersonville, Indiana. So wherefore, in recognition of his athletic accomplishment, his strength of character, his service to our country, and his service to this community, we will solve that today, August the 7th, 2017, shall be proclaimed Andre Shelby Appreciation Day in Jeffersonville,
For Councilperson Ellis, I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
I move that we pass this resolution. All of a second. Everybody wants a second.
I got a wonderful first and second to pass, 2017 or 7. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, resolution passes. Congratulations. I think at this time...
We also have the mayor.
Did you want to do that after the mayor? Let the mayor go?
Yes.
Do that first?
Yes. Andre, well, I'll come down. I'll come down.
In appreciation of all of your accomplishments, Andre, we give you this from the common council of the City of Jeffersonville.
That's all right. I want to hear him talk.
Okay.
This really goes beyond, see, a lot of people, just like everybody, to make it be part of a normal life. A lot of times we're not ready to stand, but this goes down for all of you.
This time, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Mike Moore.
I tell you, Commodore of the Port is a, it's like the symbol of the city of Jeffersonville that the mayor bestows on just a very special few people. Andre, I got to tell you, I'm welling up here. I know you are. I know your family is. I've had the honor of knowing your father for quite some time, and I've heard many stories over the years about everything that you've achieved, and you can just see the glimmer in his eyes of how excited he is talking about you. But you're not just representing the Shelby family here. You're representing a community that feels extremely fortunate to call you our son. The state of Indiana, County of Clark, the United States. How many people get to say they've represented and they've won, and they've won it all? This is such a tremendous honor. This is a very, very small token, but I hope it's something that the creators of this, when they came up with the Commodore of the Port, they wanted it just for special occasions. City of Jeffersonville is very proud to bestow on Andre Shelby the Commodore of the Port Award. It means more than the words that are on this plaque. You've represented us. You're our family. We are so, so proud of you. I don't know how many people around Jeff know this old gray-haired man here. We've got one other thing that's been in the works for a little while. Wanted the element of surprise here. We weren't sure we were going to be able to get this done, but we've got something here that everybody, for generations to come, Lee, or, sorry, Andre. For generations to come, this is going to be hanging on the home of champions wall. That one might be a little too hard to carry, so there's a smaller version of it right there. You can take that over, or you can hang it up, whatever you like. I can't say enough. We hear stories and we see things on the news that sometimes kind of tough to take. Not only the military background, the family, community background, the national recognition. You know, let's not ever forget the good things. I love having the little leaders here. Hopefully, this is a dream you guys maybe can set as a goal. But to represent your community on a national level and to come home with a gold medal, that's what they make we eat, we eat cereal. I do want to recognize Trey Hollingsworth was a big part of this, too. He wanted to make sure that this recognition took place.
I want to add, we do have representation from Congressman Trey Hollingsworth's office here with us tonight to witness this firsthand, so we appreciate her coming.
September 8th, we leave for Beijing for the world championships.
Are you seated higher than 11?
Well, we actually, I'm actually number two in the world right now.
For those that didn't hear or can't hear, Andre, he said September the 11th, September he will be leaving for Beijing for the world championship. So let's wish him well and pray God sees you.
You ain't going to cry, now, are you?
Councilperson Ellis, thank you so much for pulling this together and bringing such a wonderful gentleman to our attention, all his great accomplishments. On behalf of council, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
It's hard to get back to business, but I'll have a roll call, please.
Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Sestobny.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Council President Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Present.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all nine council members are present.
I'll give a second just for the room to clear, and then we'll go right on into...
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular proceedings for July 24, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I got a motion and a second. Is any further discussion?
I will be abstaining from absence.
Okay, we got one abstention for the record. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Approval of claims, Heather, oh, approval of agenda, I'm sorry. Thank you. I do need to, I need to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with the removal of number 26. That's been asked to be removed by the chief, so I will entertain a motion for approval of agenda without removal.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? See a none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now for claims, general first, please, Heather. I did go in and went through the claims, and they were in order.
The civil city claims are $628,955.36.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, a second to approve the general claims for the $628,955.36. Is there any further questions or comments? Let's see a none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Parks, in all parks.
I'm sorry.
All parks was in order, too.
Parks claims are $427,836.47.
There was a claim on page five of seven, if you flip back about two-thirds of the way down, $2,381.
Yes.
For a Cartograph service paid back to the city of Jeffersonville. This is a reimbursement for a portion of a service that the city has that vehicle maintenance uses. I think there's other uses of the software, but it's primarily used to track vehicles to see how we're maintaining our vehicles and that kind of, it's asset management software. Previously, this has all been paid somewhere else. It was determined that every department who uses the software needs to pay a portion. It's a $50,000 contract, annual contract. This is a one-time thing. It kind of irks me because we didn't budget for it, because it's always been taken care of other, you know, in another place. I don't guess $2,300 is going to break the Parks Department. Mr. Northam didn't bring it up. It was something that was caught by a board member in an email, and questions were asked. I just wish that if we're going to change the way we're going to handle these contracts, that maybe we need to do that at budget time instead of a department who handles something just comes, you know, to a meeting and says, hey, we need to split this up nineteen different ways and pay for it out of other funds. If it had been any more, I probably would ask for it to be removed. I just wanted to comment on the record that I didn't think it was appropriate.
I saw the claim, and I saw the division out of all the departments and what they owed, and I kind of had the same question to Peggy. I'm like, did the departments know that this was coming? Because some of them have a healthier budget than others, and there's, you say $2,000, but there's a lot the Parks can do with $2,000.
That's true.
So, do you wish for it to remain in there, or do you...
Anybody else have any thoughts? I mean, I don't care pulling. It was explained to me that the bill was split up nineteen different ways, and we thought, whoever thought, we'd just see what departments would pay it.
Can I ask a real quick question? Is it an annual contract?
I believe so.
Yes. I don't, it is? Yes. I don't have the contract. With Cartograph? Uh-uh. It's a wastewater contract. You still get all contracts, correct? Is it based on percentage of vehicle usage?
I believe so.
By users.
By users.
And being asset management's not just vehicles, but it can potentially be for land and buildings and...
Okay, so it's just like depreciation, like tracking depreciation?
Mm-hmm.
My comment, I concur with what you said. Paul is fine with paying it, just paying it along through, but if he balks, then I would support that, too.
I think the way that it's divided makes sense, but I agree that it should have been handled at an appropriate time, and this is not one of them.
I think it leads to a bigger discussion beyond this claim. This is a contract that's been handled by wastewater in the past.
For years.
Right, and the primary function is vehicle maintenance. In other areas, wastewater contributes to the salaries of the finance department, the HR department, the IT department, the safety coordinator, but they don't contribute to vehicle maintenance. And I think this was one of their contributions for the use of that department and the use of another department outside of wastewater that's supported by tax dollars. So maybe we need to reevaluate what wastewater's contribution is to offset the tax dollars that go into maintaining their vehicles. I don't know. It really kind of is irritating that a $50,000 contract was significant enough for wastewater to come back and say, we need to split this up, somebody else needs to pay for it. But that's another discussion for another time.
So I will entertain a motion to approve these claims.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to pass, Park claims of $427,836.47. Any further discussion? See a none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those approved, motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Report of the clerk.
I don't have anything other than to say it was a pretty exciting night here for a meeting, and I'm glad the young, the baseball team stayed around to see a gold medalist.
Yes.
You know, it's the first one I've ever seen, and hopefully, you know, the children, I think they enjoyed it, too.
So, and thank you for your assistance. We went down, but also in making sure that we had the resolution tonight, and we appreciate that. So we will move on to unfinished business. We have Heather Metcalf, 2017 OR 43, an ordinance transferring certain funds from the same department that did pass in first and second. Is there any changes?
No, there's no changes.
Motion to approve on the final reading.
Got a motion and a second to pass, 2017 OR 43, in the third and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Heather, and we will have a public hearing on this, but we have 2017 OR 43, an ordinance for additional appropriation that passed in first and second. Is there any changes?
No. Ordinance number 44, yes.
So if there's no changes, I will entertain a motion.
Or do you mean a public hearing?
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm getting off my game here. I was doing so well. At this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this additional appropriation? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. I see a none. I'm officially closing public hearing.
Motion to approve on the final reading.
Second.
Got a motion, second to pass, 2017 OR 43, in the third and final. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Guess that we have Nathan Pruitt, 2017 OR 45, an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for Spring Street Master Plan, and it did pass on the first and second.
Good evening, council. I presented this at the last meeting and kind of talked to you about our vision for Spring Street. Obviously, we have the Spring Street Master Plan, which was incorporated into the comprehensive plan, and it's an exciting retrofit of Spring Street and fixing a lot of issues that have been not dealt with for a while, especially in the Glazier neighborhood, but then also some updates and retrofits, obviously, for downtown and in our burgeoning arts and cultural districts. So the intent of this, much like the Nahann Fieldhouse Fund or some of the other special funds that we have in the city, this is designated for the specific purpose of implementing that plan, no other use, it's just for that purpose. And it allows us to take in funds from other sources, so if organizations, nonprofits, or other groups want to contribute to that, or if we get grant money, we can fold all of that into one fund and pay for that project that way. And nothing's changed since the last time I presented.
Motion to pass, 2017 OR 45, in the third and final reading.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to pass, 2017 OR 45, in the third and final. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Going on to new business, which Kelly, we have Keely Stingle, Executive Director of the Homeless Coalition. Kelly, do you need to add anything before we...
Yeah, I just, so I first met Keely when she was working for the Lieutenant Governor's Office of Community and Rural Affairs. She's a community liaison for several counties in southern Indiana, and I was very excited when she told me that she's the new executive director for the Homeless Coalition of southern Indiana. And so I wanted to make sure she had the opportunity to give a formal introduction to the council and also update us on what's been going on since she's taken over. So with that, I'll let you.
Thank you, Kelly. My name is Keely Stingle, and I did want to have an opportunity to introduce myself...
Thank you, Kelly. My name is Keely Stingle and I did want to have an opportunity to introduce myself as the executive director of the Homeless Coalition of Southern Indiana. For those of you that are not familiar with our organization, we really are the brainchild of the mayor's homelessness task force and then that affiliated plan, which is Vision 2025. Which seeks to eradicate homelessness in Clark and Floyd counties by 2025. So a couple of things that came out of that plan, one, the creation of our organization, and another need that was identified was to hire a care coordinator. So some of the things that we've done since the initial investment from the city, we have been able to leverage the funds that we have received from the city to get an additional, over ninety thousand dollars of additional funding. That includes the city of New Albany, that includes some grant funding from foundations, as well as civic groups, faith-based groups, and individual donors. We've also set up our 501(c)(3) status, hired an executive director. And then we've done some logo, logo and branding material, as well as have a fiscal office space. And you may have seen in the News and Tribune, we have done a white flag program, so we filled an unmet need last winter to shelter those in need anytime the temperature dropped below thirty-five degrees. So we served one hundred twenty-six individuals, operated forty nights, in a very mild winter. Most often, they recommend seventy-five to eighty nights, so we look to anticipate an increase in that if the winter is more severe than it was last year. We also got a large number of volunteers for that. And so some of our continued efforts that we have are increased visibility and awareness, not only of the organization, but also of homelessness and its causes in the communities. We want to coordinate services among service providers, as well as partner with units of local government, identifying ways, whether that be through code enforcement or just advocacy and awareness of homelessness and trying to reduce that in the communities. We lastly want to get community buy-in as well, so through fundraising, volunteer opportunities, and our white flag program. Some of the things that are going to require continued investment from our partners, like the city of Jeffersonville, would be to identify and secure a site for white flag in Clark County. Last year it was operated in Floyd County, but we would like to expand that to Clark County. Also, we'd like to create a system that tracks the relationship between service providers, so we can see where clients go and the different touchpoints that our service providers have among the homeless and those at risk as well. We also want to create real-time access for housing availability, so someone can pick up the phone if they're homeless or at risk of homelessness and be able to know where to go and then what beds are available to them. We lastly want to do, create resource for service providers and outlining different, different eligibility criteria for their clients, so their clients don't spend more time without housing, without knowing where to go. So I appreciate your time and being able to introduce myself as the executive director. Do you all have any questions for me?
I primarily too wanted Keely to introduce because obviously we're starting to consider budget time. And so I wanted to make sure that council was aware of this organization and we have made an investment to this organization prior to. So I wanted to make sure she was part of those discussions when we're considering continuing to support the organization.
That's why I asked, make sure I have her contact information, because Vicki and I actually met with her, was it last week?
Yes.
Boy, time flies. And she's really got a good game plan. She's really hit the ground running and I liked her right off the bat. So you've got a huge undertaking, but if anybody can do it, you can do it.
Thank you.
I did meet and talked with the mayor and also with Heather and we'll have those discussions during budget hearing. And if there's no objections and you're in the budget, we will call and we will let you know.
Sounds great. My contact information is on the paper as well, so if you all have any questions, you can email me at any time. I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Mr. Merkley and John Kraft. There's public hearing in all, all three of these. I'll have to remember that. But the first one, actually, all three of these go together, so can we open, we can open up a public hearing for all three at one time?
I think you can combine the public hearing, but it'll take three separate.
Three separate motions.
Yes.
So after he presents and I open up the public hearing for all three, we can immediately go in if, if you all are agreeable to keep it moving. So, Mr. Merkley.
Yeah, the next three items, number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, basically concern the same matter, that is, the rezoning of property for the same business. Properties are located at 206 Fairview Avenue, 210 Fairview Avenue, and 212 Fairview Avenue. I will turn the matter over to John Kraft, who is representing the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. John Kraft with Law Firm of Young Lynn Anderson Kraft, 126 West Spring Street in New Albany. As Mr. Merkley indicated, this is before you this evening on three separate zoning requests, 206 Fairview Avenue, 210, and 212. 206 and 210 are being taken from Old City Residential to Neighborhood Industrial. 212 is currently C2 and it is likewise going into Neighborhood Industrial. For those of you that are familiar with Munich Welding, this is that property. I do have, while it may be crude, but it's been, it's allowed me to continue to take the opportunity to.
Huh? Oh, forgot.
The properties that we're talking about, 206 would be this parcel, 210 this parcel, and 212. Campfire Properties LLC is the real estate owner of the property owned by Munich Welding or the property where the business operates. The, the common thread with Munich, as well as with Campfire Properties, who is the applicant, is Joe Papalia. Joe is with me this evening in the event that anyone would certainly have questions of him. But these three properties, two of which have already been acquired by Campfire Properties, it was through the process of the request on 206, which is currently being acquired, that Mr. Pruitt brought to our attention that these two properties have not yet been rezoned to Neighborhood Industrial. So as a result of that, when we came in for this property, we are asking for all three of these to be rezoned to Neighborhood Industrial. The property, and I know it probably can't do it overhead, but all the property that is currently outlined in red is owned by Campfire Properties and wouldn't make up the campus for Munich Welding. The element that we, of course, have to meet would be those statutory elements that we went before the plan commission on all three of these. Received a favorable recommendation for all three. I will tell you that at this point Munich is not certain whether they're going to be using these properties as parking or building a new building. One of the assurances that you have as council members would be that whatever is being done, this has to go back to the plan commission for development plan approval. So tonight is merely a land use of those three parcels, again, 206, 210, and 212. Not to jump too far in advance, but maybe to somewhat expedite the item that would be item eighteen, which would be on page two of the agenda, is the vacation of this portion of Fairview, which is in front of 206 and 210. And that would be something that, that tonight would merely be for presentation purposes. In order to meet the statutory requirements, we have to publish, as well as Ms. Conlin has posted the notice for the public hearing, which would be scheduled for your next council meeting for public hearing. But I did at least want to bring that to your attention. And certainly, as Mr. Kraut would tell you, that any vacation would be subject to any rights that already exist with the city with respect to utilities or otherwise. And that verification, of course, subsequently would take place. This evening, we're asking for those three rezones. As Mr. Merkley indicated, we've tried to expedite and present it in one, but because they are three separate applications, we would need a vote on each of those three favorable recommendations. Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Kraft or Mr. Merkley for opening up for public hearing?
Mr. Kraft, can you hold the, the drawing back up?
Yes.
And show, just show me where the Munich building, the, the main building is. Is that this?
That would be the shaded area. This would be. This is East Boulevard.
Okay.
This would be the railroad tracks.
Somewhat, yeah, that's right.
This would be the, the main building here, and then, of course, these properties.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Kraft, does Munich plan on taking all of those housing units there on Fairview? Because I can remember when that was mostly a residential neighborhood. And with the school system complaining that we're losing residences and losing children, every time that there comes a residential parcel open, a business or something is sucking it up. And it affects the amount of families and children that we have in those neighborhoods. So I'd like to know, will you be coming back shortly to rezon those other properties that haven't been rezoned?
I will tell you that the only properties that Campfire has acquisition or has acquired are only those three. The other properties that are on Fairview that are not marked within the red or within the color, and that's a class they teach in law schools, is colored. But ultimately, none of these have been acquired by Campfire. So as a result of that, the only ones that they own are either already outlined in red, which is what Campfire acquired, and then these three properties have been acquired previously. And then in the previous matters, and again, it's color-coded, beginning in nineteen ninety-four, when the Ernstberger family controlled Munich, all these other vacations have taken place as well. But right now, the only property that has been acquired by Campfire would be those three properties. They own no others in the block.
I'd just like to point out to council, that is a dead-end street, and I did bring up it, it will remain a dead-end street, so it's those last three at the dead end, correct, Mr. Kraft?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, what, what's interesting is the only portion that is really made vacated would be in front of 206 and 210. 212, actually, that is an easement that runs back, runs back to it, where the public right-of-way actually ends at the alleyway. And there's an alleyway in between 210 and 212. That likewise is in our petition that you'll hear at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I want to officially open up the public hearing for properties located at 206 Fairview, 210 Fairview Avenue, and 212 Fairview Avenue. And they are going from an R3, which is Old City Residential, to N1, which is Neighborhood Industrial. Is there anybody here in the public that wish to speak on this, these three properties? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I'm officially closed, public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. And I would like to, first, we'll go entertain the motion, I will state the name of the property, and if you want to go right on in to keep things moving. So I'll entertain a motion for 2017 OR 46 for the 206 Fairview Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for 210 Fairview for 2017 OR 47.
So moved.
Second.
Got first and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And I'll entertain a motion for 2017 OR 48 for 212 Fairwood Avenue.
So moved.
Fairview.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
That passed. Well, we have, since this was brought up to my, yes, to my attention, to my district, I had a chance to drive by Munich Welding. And in the front, you know, the signage and the appearance is kind of looks old and dated. Is there any, while I have the, the owner here, is there any plans to update that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's one of my pet peeves too. We need to do that. So we, we will be doing some side work.
I just thought I'd ask while you're here. Thank you.
I'm passing around all three at the same, so.
So item number eighteen on the agenda is Mr. Kraft, the introduction for that ordinance vacating in public way. And like he stated, no action will be taken at this meeting. It'll be one reading only for next meeting in conjunction with the public hearing. Was there anything else that you need to add that you didn't give in your presentation?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we will move on to document number nineteen, which is Vicki Conlin, an ordinance amending 2016 OR 77, which amends 2015 OR 18, which amends 2012. All of those, ordinance establishing department petty cash and/or cash change fund, which yours is cash change fund we're talking about.
What it is, is that now that we have the violations bureau, we had a hundred dollars originally. And we're having more people come in and pay in the traffic bureau, and we don't have at times enough money to make change. So they start out with a hundred dollars. So what I'm asking is for the ordinance violation clerk, which does the animal control mostly, to raise hers from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five. And then the traffic bureau, which taking the majority of the police, the traffic cases, from a hundred to two hundred. So we will be able to make change.
Do you think those are enough respectively?
Yes, yeah.
Is there any other changes to the ordinance?
No, no, none whatsoever. That's the only two.
Motion to approve 2017 OR 49 on the first and second.
Second. Got a motion to pass 2017 OR 49, the first and second. Is there any other discussion, comment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Merkley, an ordinance establishing, oh, no, public hearing. An ordinance amending the Jeffersonville zoning ordinance, 2006 OR 61, to amend the downtown commercial DC district uses in Article Four and amending gas station standards in Article Seven.
This is an amendment to our existing zoning code, making some changes and also adding some clarification to some definitions. It comes to you as a result of a favorable recommendation from the planning commission, and I believe Nathan Pruitt is here to explain in more detail what is being proposed and answer any of your questions.
Good evening. So this one's fairly simple. One thing that we're seeing as we're expanding our downtown, getting new businesses in and seeing lots of activities, that sometimes the downtown uses, they, they're just not there in our code. So we wanted to relook at our downtown commercial uses and allow the things that we'd like to have. You can see in there the, the things that have been, uses in, in orange, which may have been light gray in your packet, reflect new uses, either permitted or special exception, just depending on which page they fall on. But basically, it just, it brings some uses that we're already seeing, coffee shops, you know, microbreweries, micro distilleries, things like that. Ice cream shops, that was not a designated use, believe it or not, in our downtown district before. So it just brings a lot of those beneficial uses into our, into our zoning code and makes, makes it official. They don't have to come and get use variances anymore or anything like that. So this will set us up to be vibrant and permit things by right. And then the other thing is the filling in gas station, seven point three in our zoning code, this was the amendment that we made, working with council, working with plan commission, dealing with not having three or four gas stations on one intersection and instead just having a maximum of two. That was the impetus of that regulation. And then we talked about distance rules and what that looks like and having, you know, the clusters of two and then having another cluster of two so far apart from each other. And there were some interpretations after we had some discussions with other attorneys that potentially the definitions weren't quite right. And this is to make us more compliant with what was intended. And basically just amends that definition that a cluster includes one with the intent that there is a potential future location. It's not just a cluster of two, so that they could go around the distance rules. So anyhow, we just clarified that to make that more clear.
So when I, when I read through that, it was not, still not clear to me. So now every corner can have but one gas station?
No, it can have two. Two can be clustered together, but you can't have three or four all on one intersection. Maximum two, no more than two.
Does the two have to be on opposite sides of the road?
Yeah, so the way this is crafted, they have to be on opposite sides of the road, they have to be within so many feet of that intersection. And then there's a, a minimum distance between the two clusters of two down the road. And there's an updated drawing, if you look on the back there, here, that's, that's that definition of cluster can mean one with future, with a future second. We provided a little hatch mark, so it's very clear the intent of what a cluster is. It can be one or two, but no more than two.
So are we having like multiple applications to where we could potentially have three because there isn't already two on intersection?
Yeah, Veterans Parkway was, to be honest, the, the property that we were looking at, that area. We had multiple applications within basically one corner. And we had two, two in the works, one got approved, the other's not approved. There's a whole background on that case. And then across the corner, it's in litigation, actually. I didn't know if it still was. I didn't know if it still was. So, one's in litigation, one was approved and constructed, and then there's a third corner that has gone undeveloped. So, we're sitting here thinking, from a planning perspective, I don't think we want a third on that third corner, especially with the car wash on the other. So, that was, that was the intent of this, is that.
Yeah. Nathan, I have a question. What is the protocol or the hierarchy of things? If you've got a gas station already located, and then within, not too far down the road, you've got a gas station on one side, and, and then they say, oh, I can cluster this and put another on the other, does, does the cluster trump the closeness of putting a new one to the, to the other one there? I may not be articulating it well, but...
I think you're asking about vested rights of existing gas stations and establishing whether or not that, that area is a designated cluster and is basically vested away from that minimum distance rule between, whether or not you would allow a second at that location, even if it was too close to another cluster. That's kind of a legal question.
Question.
Yeah. So, for instance, the minimum distance between a two, two gas stations in a cluster from another two gas stations at another cluster is 5,280 feet. So, the question would be, if there are gas stations closer than that, and they're both single locations, but they're closer than 5,280 feet, could each of those locations receive a second gas station, even though they're outside of our minimum distance?
Because they're already...
Rules? Because they're already existing, or they grandfathered as a, as a cluster?
As a cluster, right.
So, if I got a, if I got a cluster of gas stations on Penn Street, that is one. There's one on the corner of Penn Street, and there's one on the corner of Megs. They are individual clusters. Can we put another gas station in each cluster? I'm going to, I'm closer to being two, correct?
Yeah, but they're within a mile of each other.
He stopped, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I got the mile.
One and one, and they're not within a mile, or they...
They are within a mile.
They are within a mile. Well, then whoever gets there first?
But they existed before.
Can we just outlaw gas stations? Is that something we can do? I mean, I'd like to pose...
Outlaw?
So, two, they're single...
I didn't ask. Yeah.
Yes.
We're, we're wondering if they're grandfathered in as being able to establish a new cluster.
I would not think that that means grandfathered in to acquire a second gas station, because they're not the same entity. In other words, if you go to Sunoco, and they just hold that in Sunoco.
Sunoco.
It's Texaco.
There you go.
Who's that going?
Seven-Eleven.
Seven-Eleven. So, if they're two different entities, two different companies, then there's no grandfathering those individual companies. Somebody can't come along as a third company, and they'll, you know, we're going to get the cluster.
They're not included in...
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And I'm not...
That makes sense.
Well, my, and my question kind of got to, that from one part of our regulations, our ordinance, it would, it says they couldn't move there because it's within a mile.
Right, right.
Which was I think the intent. But because of this cluster deal, if there was already one there within the mile, oh, you can put a second one there.
That is correct.
And, and so, which one, does the mile trump that, or does the cluster trump, trump the mile? That's kind of what I want to get to know.
Or, or, do we need to put language in to define this? Because we didn't define a cluster, and we ended up having to approve two more gas stations that came in that were not within that mile.
Well, clear this up for me.
Les is rolling his eyes, sir.
On the corner of Utica-Selvusburg Road, there is already a Circle K. Now, farther on down 62, they just built a little service station there, and then across from the Circle K, on the corner, there's an old house that they're tearing down that I've heard is going to be a service station. Is it allowable?
Because it's already within a mile of Hux.
But it can be a cluster with Circle K across the street.
Right. So, does the cluster...
Cluster, great, yeah. We need to put something in there that I think that says, the mile trumps the cluster.
If that's how...
That's what I think.
I'm not sure if that language is the right, but I agree.
If it's within a mile, the answer's no. That's what it needs to say.
We will say no.
So, let's have a proposition, I think it makes sense.
Wouldn't serving both concerns be that there shall not be more than two gas stations within one mile?
Correct.
Then...
Just want to make sure this cluster designation doesn't blow holes in our argument.
I think the cluster designation creates a situation. If you have one station a mile away, you've got another, then you got a limitation.
Well, I think you want, I think you want at least an option to have two...
No, I don't.
At...
No, I don't.
An off-ramp from an interstate. Not one.
And also, by defining a cluster, by defining a cluster, we're able to say that they're going to be on opposite sides...
Correct.
Of the street. So, if it's no more than two within a mile, then you could have two right next to one another, correct?
Downtown.
So, that's why we defined it as, or that's why you defined, I didn't define it, but as being a cluster on the opposite side of the street.
It ought to be two separately.
We can revisit this. I think the definition update...
It sounds like Nathan is...
Is a fairly good move in the short term for legal purposes, I would think, but it sounds like we need to revisit the code again, and have a more in-depth conversation.
It's a moratorium.
I think it's, I think it's pretty simple. This council does not want gas stations within a mile of each other. It doesn't matter if they're on a street corner, across the street from each other, or what else.
That's no more than one...
I agree with that. We have seven gas stations within two and a half miles, and it's out of hand, with plans for more. I mean...
We will have to come to you with another amendment, if that's the case.
And Nathan, also, it says that, it might be a little misleading, because you have two things on the one, where you're talking about downtown, so somebody might think, are these just gas stations for downtown?
These are just updates to the zoning code. One is in the use standards in Article 4, and then the gas stations in a completely separate section, Article 7.
Do we want to separate these?
They're separate.
And at least vote on Article 7 tonight, and then revisit Article 4, or?
Well, it's all together.
I mean, we don't have to vote on either. Neither are pressing, per se, except for the, some of the gas, I don't know.
Well, if the, if this is addressing a current gas issue, then it doesn't hurt our future revisions to pass this now. Then we can get all the language right on the next revision.
That's an option.
We're going to have to pass on first or second.
Can we, can we pass what's presented on the first?
Yes.
It's just a one.
Do we have something that's...
Well, do I...
If we make any change, it has to go to planning itself anyway, so it's going to start the process kind of over.
Yeah, you're right.
Do we have anyone ready to open up?
I'd, I'd say that there's probably interest in, in the community. This is not official filings, but I obviously look at the real estate market, there's probably at least three or four properties in the city that are actively being marketed for that purpose.
And they're all within a quarter mile of each other.
We did advertise this for a public hearing, so should I go ahead, just formally to go ahead and open up?
Go ahead and open up a public hearing, and I think these, it's the simplest way to do this, is to hold it down, get back to what...
That's what I was going to do.
...possible, which would be a...
Okay.
But will that allow somebody to, will that allow someone to open a gas station on the corner of Veterans Parkway that you're talking about?
Or anywhere.
Well, there's, there's one that's in litigation right now on Veterans Parkway, that's...
That's northeast corner. The southwest corner is undeveloped.
Nothing about...
So, it's just going to allow that to be...
This says they should be on opposite sides of the road, so no. Our current ordinance states that they must be on opposing sides of the road, so we're covered on that other corner. They would not be able to file, because they don't meet the current...
They're on opposing sides of Hamburg Pike.
The existing gas station that's there is on the southern side.
Southeast.
Yes. And the opposing undeveloped corner going...
Southwest.
Well, there's, there's two corners. There's the litigation property, which is across the street, and then there's the one right next door, which it, they couldn't file, because they're not on opposing sides of the street.
Oh, you're on the same side of the street.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Correct, actually, yes.
I was thinking it was across.
I'll make a motion with the expectation of being voted down.
I need to, I want to go ahead and...
Oh, the public hearing.
Because it was advertised, I do want to go ahead, and, so I'm going to officially open up public hearing for 2017 OR 50. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to officially close public hearing, and now, Nathan, you are free to make your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 2017 OR 50.
Second?
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fail.
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 I give up, people. I get no balance, I know what I'm doing.
Well, I get carried. No carry.
Yeah.
You need to take it, take it all the way through, though.
Okay.
So, did the planning commission approve these new uses and the...
So, all the same thing, is it within one linear mile or one radius mile? A one, a one. A gas station shall be within a radius mile? Radius. Is it a construction... Radius.
That'll get more, that'll get even better, eliminate...
Would you ever want more?
We could do five miles.
I would suggest radius, but...
Yeah, radius.
Based on, based on what I think what you're all wanting to accomplish, I think radius would be the way to go.
I think we could, five miles would be acceptable to me.
Just depends, if you go like that, I think it would radius. That's actually circumference.
The radius covers 300 of the banks. It's not one direction.
All right. Mr. Merkley, an ordinance amending 2016 OR 1, an ordinance establishing sidewalk fee and lieu program, and non-reverting sidewalk construction fund.
The next three items, the next three ordinances, specifically items 21, 22, and 23, all sort of go together. When Heather and I were going, going through the budget proposals, the department submitted for next year, putting them together, the budget, which we should have, we will have to you, the administration's budget proposal to you at the next meeting, we realized that there is, we have some issues regarding some funds, funds dealing with sidewalks. Right now, we have two ordinance, two funds, non-reverting funds, that deal with money for sidewalk construction. There is an old one that dates back to 1987, in which has been amended a couple of times, and that set up the sidewalk replacement program, and that's what we call the 50-50 program, and it's the ADA program, and so forth. That's a non-reverting fund that we only use, under the ordinance, only the money should be used to match the 50-50. So, if a resident wants a sidewalk repaired in front of their house, they're to pay half of that cost, the other half comes from the city out of that non-reverting fund. We have about $85,000 in that fund, as we sit here today. We don't get a whole lot of request on that. And it's, sort of has been the thought with the administration and consultation with the city engineer, Mr. Crouch, that that's sort of unfair for those people out in town to have to match 50-50, but then the people in the other parts of the town are getting sidewalks without putting up any money. So, the idea is to go ahead and abolish that program, which would require repealing the ordinances 87 OR 18, 93 OR 18, 2000 OR 22, and 2013 OR 1. That is the third ordinance that's on your list. The other fund that we have, which was established back in, I believe this was established in 2016, there was a program that was established that, the in lieu program for sidewalks. Well, if a developer comes in, and under our, our code, they are required to put sidewalks in, but for some reason, it doesn't make sense to put sidewalks, they can put money into this fund that goes to fund sidewalks in the master sidewalk plan for the city. That ordinance also established a non-reverting fund for construction of sidewalks. All we want to do with that is to take out the provision that established the non-reverting fund. Everything else with the program stays the same. The money still goes into a non-reverting fund, but it's going to be a non-reverting fund that is established by the first ordinance that you have. So, what we will have is, we will have only one fund to deal with sidewalk construction. Whatever money is collected or appropriated by the council will go into that fund, it will stay in that fund, and will be spent as the council sees, deems appropriate, hopefully after consultation with the city engineer. So, first step is to adapt, adopt the ordinance establishing the new non-reverting sidewalk fund.
That'll be ordinance number 51.
I move to establish OR 51.
Second. On which readings?
First and second.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second for 2017 OR 57, on the first and second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion does carry.
The next one would be simply amending 2016 OR 1, removing the provisions that establishes a non-reverting fund. That would be 2017 OR 52.
I move to 2017 OR 52 on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, pass 2017 OR 52, and the first and second. Any further discussion, comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion does carry.
The next ordinance, which would be 2017 OR 53, that would repeal the prior ordinances, abolishing the sidewalk replacement program. Also, under that ordinance, the $85,000 that's currently in that fund would be transferred into the new non-reverting sidewalk construction fund.
Move to first and second reading, 2017 OR 53.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, pass 2017 OR 53, and the first and second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Les, this still requires the money to be used for sidewalks.
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion does carry. Thank you. Heather, we have 2017, which looks like it'd be OR 54, and ordinance of additional appropriation, and our public hearing will be 8:21 of 17.
Which one would you like first?
The health insurance one's first in our package.
That is to appropriate $1,250,000 more into your health insurance line that could be transferred later on in the year to the health insurance account.
Motion to approve on the first and second.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 53, on the first and second reading. Is there any further question or comment?
Yeah, I have a question. What, are we doing this because what we budgeted before is not enough, or would...
Yes, claims and, and the prescriptions have come in higher than what we assumed they would be.
So, will this be enough to finish the year?
Yeah, I believe so.
And how much did we originally appropriate, incorporate for health insurance?
4.5.
Yeah. And we were, we were meeting with Heather, we were going to originally do this for a million, but we figured it'd be safer to do than $1,250,000.
We had had five, we ended up getting that.
Yeah.
And I also know we're getting, our health insurance, we know is coming up.
Yes, I talked to Joe Olson this morning, and he said he should have that probably within a week.
I know he says it's going up, but you didn't know the amount, right? All right, thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Yes.
The next one is for the monies that Mr. White was discussing with me earlier, and this is to go into the planning, no, the Spring Street Implementation Plan. I don't know if you want to speak on that.
Yeah, these funds would be put into the non-reverting fund that we just approved, along with the $120,000 that was approved, I believe, at the last meeting. $450,000 from general fund and $400,000 from edit to go to those two projects. And this will, because it's a non-reverting fund, allow the funds to stay there as construction. We anticipate construction being, as soon as the construction season opens next year.
Do we have the exact cost on this now?
No. We have United Consulting is doing that, but right now, Mr. Pruitt's in negotiations with them on the final product of the cost estimate.
And those estimates were taken care of already, that won't come out of this money?
Correct, UEZ paid for that stuff.
The UEZ paid for that. Is the UEZ going to put more money into this fund?
Yes.
Will, and I guess I should...
Well, we may not put it in the fund, but we may pay for the design phase, for example.
So the UEZ wouldn't be able to cut a check to the city to put in this non-reverting fund, but they're going to set aside funds in their budget for the project?
Correct. We think it's more advantageous not to put the money into the non-reverting fund.
Because you're a nonprofit?
Right.
Has UEZ done their budget for next year?
We have not. We've discussed it, but we haven't said it yet. But we had $300,000, we have $300,000 now for this project, and we used... $50,000 Nathan for the study? $35,000. $35,000 for the study, so...
So you have another 250, 260-ish? Heather, what does this leave in the edit appropriation for this year?
For what we budgeted for this year? That uses up the...
Twelve-line statement.
Like 300, about 300. Any unappropriated?
Looks like we have...
You currently have $261,000 that's of current year revenues that are not budgeted yet.
And 1.4 in the fund.
Correct, yes. By the end of the year.
Is all the money appropriated? Trying to ask, figure out how to ask this question. If we go by strictly what we budgeted and appropriated, what is left? Not fund balance.
Of the revenues that are, the current year revenues compared to the current budget?
Well, the revenues is different, we'll assume is different than what we budgeted.
He's asking like, when this year is carried out, like, how much more money have we already appropriated that needs to be spent from the fund?
Yeah, well, how much did we budget at the beginning of 2017 for edit to spend?
$4 million, sorry, $2,084,000.
Yes.
And how much of that is left that's available?
To be spent?
Encumbered appropriations is $303,000. So we have 303 left, no, that's encumbered appropriations.
Of total unspent appropriation, your budget is 1.4.
No, that's over time.
That's on the last page of your...
So, on the 12-line statement, it says we budgeted $2.00, or $2 million. It says we've encumbered $303,000 of those appropriations.
Right, and you've done some addition, or, no, they should be on there too.
Basically, we approved appropriations at $2,084,000 for the year. Our revenue is 2.475 million for the year. I don't know what we've spent out of the $2 million in appropriations yet.
$1,060,000.
And how much of what that's, that million plus that's left over, how much of that is already spoken for?
If you look at the very last two pages of this, of your big book, sorry, of your account balance, your expenditures start about this, from here down?
It shows the council has $25,000 left from our piece of that, and then it breaks it out to parks and green space.
Sidewalks, got some motor vehicle, that's for road paving, and then the parks and the green space.
Thank you.
You know, I have a couple of thoughts. When I look at this, it's not the money per se. I think we probably, probably have the money. I mean, I imagine Mr. White did the work to find the money. My question is the priority. We have a 10-year, we have a sidewalk master plan that was developed, I don't know, five years ago, and there's still projects on that plan that never got sidewalks. There's the newly annexed areas that we promised to continue to develop and upgrade for streets and streetlights and sidewalks, and we've been doing some of that, but those folks have never had sidewalks. So I totally support this project, and when it was brought to us, it was supposed, my understanding was it's going to be done in phases, which I totally support. But I don't support putting all this money towards this project when there's other projects I think that supersede this project.
I too thought it was going to be done in phases, and I did speak with councilperson White. I have concern with the edit, even though we have the reserves, only because I know some needs that are coming down the pipe. One need that's going to be coming down is the new new brine truck. We're getting into that season. I know there's a, they're down another packer. I just, I just see the safeguard for edit, and as you all know, I kind of like try to get that for capital purchases, one and done, so I just wanted to let that known.
Well, and my two cents would be, I mean, we were told by the administration we're going to have a budget in our hands next week, and this is the type of thing that should be prioritized. I wouldn't see a reason to, A, wipe out edit when we have four months of the year left, and God knows what's going to happen in those four months, and it dips into the reserves. Why, I wouldn't be for dipping into the reserves to do any kind of beautification project. I mean, those previous councils made very tough decisions on not spending money to build that reserve up. I don't think they were holding on to it for a project that, while I agree with that, I do support the project in phases over time, but this kind of feels like this is getting jumped to the front of the line, and I think there's a lot better ways right now, if we were going to spend $850,000, I think there's a lot better ways to spend it than this.
Heather, after this appropriation, how much would be left in the edit fund?
Total, estimated at the end of the year would be a little over a million, because it would be your line 17 subtracted from the amount requested.
And the $120,000 for Eastern to Dutch Lane sidewalk has already been removed from that, correct?
Oh, that's not included in that, I apologize. Yeah. Is it, is that?
No.
It might not be added in there yet.
It was 381, I believe, last week, the surplus over revenues. Somewhere around there.
If we need to...
I'm sorry, it is included in that number.
Because, yeah.
Yes.
So we'll have over a million dollars to fund projects that, it's not clearly stated how much would cost or when they would be implemented. And we have, after this, I believe we would get back to our cash balance before we took the $2 million, before we took the $2 million out for the building at the soccer field. We had $6 million on January 1st, which dropped us down to four. So we're back up to that $6 million in our general fund reserves, which is 29.46% above our target. Well, our target's 15, but that leaves us at 29.46%. Right now, with, if I understand this correctly, with the 15% target, we're at 71.15% reserve with our edit. So that gets us down to what our target cash level should be based on your professional guidance. If I, if I'm not stating this correctly, please correct me. So, for these projects that we're not sure how much they cost, or when they will be done, or what needs to be done, we still have funds in these, in the edit fund to fund those, and we can budget those for next year. We're not touching any current sidewalk funds. This is funds that are unappropriated, right?
Of the 261,000 is the revenues that are not appropriated as of now.
Okay. All right.
If we need to pump the brakes on the edit funds, it sounds like some council members are a little iffy on that. That may be something we have to revisit towards the end of the year, but I would be in favor of, I'm in favor of both appropriations, but would especially be in favor for the general fund appropriation, because it would not require dipping into reserve. But I just want to emphasize that I don't think this is a sidewalk project.
Correct.
This is a planning project and an economic development project for which there's economic development income tax dollars being requested. So I just want to point that out. This is much more than sidewalks. Though we do spend several hundred thousand dollars on sidewalks everywhere else in the city every year. I don't think that's going to change.
Yeah, the intention of this money is to be transferred to the Spring Street Implementation Plan.
But I don't understand, kind of the basis, not really the details of it, why is this not being part of the normal budget process? I mean, we're doing the budget next week. Then we can have all those arguments about appropriating the money for that project or whatever phase of that project.
I think you will see this in the budget.
Right.
But I don't think, I think you're going to see this in the budget, well, I don't know what the administration plan is, but I hope that we see this in the budget next year and probably the year after, to do it in phases, as we're discussing. But to do an appropriation out of funds for, out of this budget, to go ahead and get the jumpstart on construction next year, I think is the goal. But to say that it should fall in line with a 10-year sidewalk master plan, this is not a component of a sidewalk master plan. This is a, you know, a development tool that has come out of the planning department and the UEZ to help an area that we've spent no money on for a long time.
Correct. And we're, the goal is to get as much done as possible. I don't think, when it was presented, it was presented as we would be doing it in phases. It may have been stated that that's a possibility. It just depends on how much construction can endure on Spring Street with the available funding. But I see a recurring talking point, and that's not how it was presented. So, just again, as, it's not a sidewalk project. I don't know where that came from, but it's a planning project, as Mr. Owen stated, and this is something we've already talked about. So it's kind of funny to hear some of the comments.
Well, we talked about it in that we approved a plan. I didn't realize that that plan meant the next month, we're going to get hit for almost a million dollars out of money that, A, we don't know what we'll need for the rest of the year, and out of the general planning, which we're going to do next week.
Well, that's for 2017.
That, I don't, and I, and true to your point, if we want to say it was in phases or not, that's also, I don't think, that's not swaying my opinion, and I'm only speaking for myself. I just have a problem with the way this is being done. I see no reason why this is not part of the normal budget process. This is taking a project and moving it to the front of the line. Now, it may not be a sidewalk project, but I sure bet I could spend a million dollars pretty easy in the middle of 10th Street, and those people would be awfully happy. Or you could put it in the 6th district, and the people would be awfully happy. Like, that's why we should have the argument in a budget process and not move this to the front of the line.
And I can't remember a time we're putting money aside without having a, an estimate of the costs. I mean, the, I, you know, there's, it's almost like, let's find money, stick it in a fund, and then whenever we find out the cost, then we have a jumpstart on it. As Mr. Hawkins said, I think it's putting it ahead of the normal process of to find the project, find, you know, find out what the costs are, and then weigh that as well as the other needs of the city, before you just put money towards a project. Well, we kind of put $120,000 towards a sidewalk project and skipped over every other project. And that was, and that was done... I will not interrupt you. So we did that, so that's a precedent that's been set. So, you know, we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost. When we budget for 2018, we're not talking about the money we are talking about here today. So, it's not a part of that process. So, the money, the funds are there. I understand the opposition, but it's not a sidewalk project, it's a planning development project. And what this is, is the way to confuse the situation so that this project doesn't get funded. And, and so, my fight here is to make sure that it does. We have the funds, there's still over a million dollars in edit to fund the things that we don't know how much they cost. But we know that this project, the Spring Street total project from the river to Dutch Lane, will cost more than a million dollars, we know that. So it's not some, just pie in the sky. The $120,000 came out of an estimate from our engineer. Yeah, it wasn't a bit out process, but that's where that number came from. It wasn't just pulled out as a portion, it should complete that phase. And as far as this district, this downtown district, which I support, we need a strong downtown, we have put lots of money down here in various mechanisms, through redevelopment, UEZ, sidewalk fund, all kinds of funds. I mean, even 10th or 12th Street project, that was just done, what, two years ago? We probably spent 400, 300, 300 to 400,000 dollars, I don't know the exact amount. But it's not like this area's been neglected by the city, it continues to improve. But there's other areas of the city as well that has needs.
And what projects are being proposed in those areas?
In which areas? I just said 12th, the 12th Street project just happened, that was 300 to 400,000 dollars. You said hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent in other areas. In my district...
All over.
In my, in my district, there's been hardly any.
Everett Pike is in your district?
It is.
Yeah, that was millions.
Yeah, and that was completed how many years ago? I mean, it was multiple years ago. So, if we're talking the last two, three years, no, there has none. It really hasn't happened in my district. And I've been trying to fight for it as well, and I get overlooked, and that's fine, because there's other, there's a lot of priorities in the city, and there's been a lot of great things that are happening in our city. But we need, you know, we, I, this project is being pushed and put to the front in a way that other projects I don't think have in the past.
My Hopkins Lane project got pushed three years in a row, so I'm glad it's finally gotten done.
Yeah, we had to fight for that.
It may be, it may be prudent, I mean, the cost estimates should be coming back within weeks. It may be prudent table until the next meeting to say that, hey, we know this is going to cost 1.5 million dollars, so let's space out the financing this way. Or, this is going to cost 5 million dollars, so we need to, you know, space out the cost this way. More information couldn't hurt.
I think, I think when determining the city's priorities, that's not necessarily the function of the council. And so I think that that direction has to come from the administration, and that's typically done through the budgeting process. The administration determines between department heads and projects, you know, what is a priority, and then we assess those during budget, and we meet in the middle to make those align. So, that's just my two cents. I kind of agree that there's a lot of moving parts here, and there's a lot of projects, and there's always a waiting list, so...
Mr. Pruitt, could you, I'd ask you some questions?
Sure.
There seems to be some talk about whether this is a priority of the administration, or where it is at the priority administration, and you're a department head, and this is a project that you've put a lot of energy and effort into, is that correct?
Yeah. First in-house plan.
I'm sorry?
It was a first in-house plan, actually, that the department did with our new planner on staff. He did a great job.
Yes. And would you consider this a priority for the administration?
Well, I'd say that it's certainly Claysburg neighborhood. I don't know if you all have walked that, but it's in desperate need of pedestrian enhancements. It's extremely dangerous. So, from a planning perspective, certainly, and from the administration's perspective, that Claysburg segment is treacherous and it's a priority.
And, so this is, so the administration thinks it's priority, because I think there seems to... I don't want to think that Dustin White is the one that has made all these plans, because I know nothing about engineering or infrastructure. But I have gone along with the things that you have done in-house and things that you have presented. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's your district, obviously this project's in your district, yeah.
Okay, and I think we had a draft plan, a draft of the cost estimate came back.
Yep, we're fine tuning that. It's a line-by-line draft, so it... It's a line-by-line draft, so it gives every single linear foot of everything, every quantity, and we're refining that to make it reflect the intent of the scope of the project.
All right. In the communication with United Consulting, what do you believe, because right now you can only estimate, because we don't have the final plan, but you estimate the total cost of the entire project being what?
Our target is 3.5.
Okay, 3.5 million. That's for the entire project from the river to Dutch Lane?
The whole thing, the whole shebang, yeah.
So with 120,000 that we approved last meeting, and then this 850,000, that would be approximately one-third, approximately one-third, with the funds we have from UEZ, we would have funding for approximately one-third of the entire project.
Roughly, yes, yeah.
And this is a major priority of the administration?
Especially the Claysburg section, yeah.
Now, when you say administration priority, are you talking, you as director of planning zoning, or are you referring to the mayor's office? Because let's make that clear.
Well, I'm representing the planning department and its initiatives.
I think this is unfair to ask, Nathan, because if any one of us said, hey, is this project in my district important? You'd go, yes, it is. So I think we're putting Nathan in a very unfortunate position.
And my comment was-
And that's why all of these things should be part of the normal budget process in which the administration has a say in, and they will be the ones determining what the priorities are, then we'll know what the priorities are based on what budget they put forward. To me, that's just the bottom. It's not that I'm against the project, I'm just against the way we're doing it.
So it, based on that, I would assume that at no point this year would you be in favor of additional appropriation for this project? We should wait to the, for the budget?
Well, budget, well, yeah, but I mean, we should be getting our hands on the budget almost any day.
I just, my hope was we would get more information with harder num, more solid numbers, and come back and rediscuss the number, but it sounds like you're not in favor of any number for an additional appropriation this year. It should come in the budget, which is-
Correct, because I don't understand why we additionally appropriated if we're going to budget, but if those monies are going to be there and they're going to carry over, then why wouldn't we just use them next year?
Why wouldn't we do that for the 120? Or why wouldn't we do that for several, I mean, why would we ever pass an additional appropriation then? If it wasn't part of-
That's a good question.
We would, because overtime goes crazy. We would, because we lose a garbage truck. We would, because you lose a fire engine. We do, because health insurance claims go crazy. I mean, those, yeah, those are definitely needs. You don't know the amounts of what will happen.
We did a $2 million additional appropriation on December 31st, 2015, to build an indoor facility at a soccer park. I mean, why wasn't that part of the budget process?
Okay, we're getting way, way-
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what the logic is.
Well, here's the thing, we have this additional appropriation in front of us. Everybody feels different, we're nine people, so let's just get back on task, and if you want to table this, make a motion to pass, whatever anybody wants to do, let's try to-
I would like to address that, because that project took, you know, a year before any money was ever allocated.
Right.
So I mean, we talked about it for over a year, and the council, everybody along the way was happy with spending that money. They agreed to it. They asked the question.
Absolutely.
So this hap, this happens, I mean, so, so I'm not, I'm not against additional appropriations. I've voted for them, and I would again, for various situations, but to equate the two is not fair, because that is a project that was going, that went on for years-
Right.
With various votes of support along the way. This is a one-timer, boom, here it is. Yeah, we support the plan, but we don't know how much it's going to cost, and then we're throwing the money ahead of budget, ahead of other projects as well.
Mr. Owen, you brought up the idea of tabling it, and I think that would be a good idea. That would be, then we hear it again at the next meeting. Mr. Pruitt can express the administration's priorities to the council individually if they have questions, and then we can fully discuss it then. So if the chairman, if not a president, will entertain the motion, I move to table the appropriation to the next meeting.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, second to table 2017 OR 55. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion carries.
You didn't vote.
Oh.
You got a half vote.
You guys, I apologize.
You got to actually ask us.
My head is hurting so bad, everything's going blurry, and I'm just, I can't keep up. I apologize. All those in favor, sing as I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Now, okay. Motion carries.
I do, I do just have one more question for Mr. Pruitt. I don't have the plan in front of me, but on that plan you detailed expected years that certain parts of the project would be attained. Is that correct? It was like, some projects were 2018, some were, you know, maybe looked at for 2019. So there are, in that sense, phases of the project.
There was an internal attempt to make a phasing of the project happen based on just a basic planning effort.
Like what the, what the needs are, and then maybe additional beautification efforts and things like that.
Right, yeah. There was, there was an internal process. It's not, I'll tell you, it's not as efficient doing it staged like that, obviously, it, because each time it's a new contractor, each element is a new vendor, or someone installing something. So we did it, we did a potential staging of the project. It wasn't an engineering staging, as if it were built all at once, or maybe in segments, but more like project-based. That's kind of how planners oftentimes work with things, until they know they have the funding. If they know they have the funding, then they can, they can do it in a much more engineered way. That's segments.
And you also specify that it's the, it's the goal to start at the Claysburg side of Spring Street, and then as money is appropriate to move down.
To move down and meet Riverside, so start north and go south.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is Larry Wilder. You have a city council attorney report for us tonight?
You know, it was just good to have an opportunity to get my mayor call vote at the last meeting, so I could go participate in the cross-examination seminar in San Francisco, but I could have just stayed here, it looks like, with all the lessons I needed, because this was pretty exciting tonight. So I've got nothing else.
All right, thank you, sir. We finally get to a department heads, and we have Sarah Simpson, who is here tonight, requests support for the Steamboat Nights of 2017.
Thank you. So as, I'm sure most of you are aware, this year's Steamboat Days is becoming Steamboat Nights. We are very excited about the changes for this event. We have a beautiful illuminated bridge and park, so we decided to make this event stand out, something different than any other event that you see in the area. So it will be held Labor Day weekend, September 1st and 2nd. Just to kind of give you a description on a few of the events that will be taking place, we will be bringing back the Balloon Glimmer, as we did last year, it was very popular. Instead of having our concerts on the River Stage this year, the concerts will actually be held in the park. So near Maple Street, we will have a large stage set up. On Friday night will be the Louisville Crashers, and Saturday night is Juice Box Heroes, which are two of the largest crowds that we see down at the River Stage. We will be doing a lantern parade that will completely surround Big Four Park. We've been holding some lantern-making sessions. We had 60 people participate in the first one. The next one's coming up this Saturday, so if you guys would like to come down and make a lantern and participate in the parade, we'd love to see you. We will be bringing back the chalk walk, but we've built a big tunnel that'll have twinkle lights, so it will be all lit up. The sand sculpting will be back, it will be illuminated as well. We have over 20 juried artists. We will be having a designer fashion show. We will be putting up the big inflatable screen and be doing two nights of movies down on the lawn. And the wine and spirits event will be back, and several other really, really awesome events that's going to make this a signature event for the city of Jeffersonville. So funding has been going very well. We have so far committed $38,000, committed from sponsors. We are receiving $25,000 from redevelopment, so I'm here requesting, as you've done in the past, $25,000 to support our budgets.
And we did, as you all know, we budgeted that out of the city council under our special product, projects, and added for 25,000. The money is sitting there.
So are you asking for another 25,000, or?
I think you're asking for, from the council, our 25,000 from the council, correct?
Correct, yes. Not additional.
Like we've done before?
Correct.
So we already have it appropriated, and?
Yeah.
Make a claim.
And that will get you what you need?
Yes, it will.
I think she just needs to submit a claim, really? Right, Heather?
Just send me a claim.
Well, she can't get into your budget.
So I just said, Sarah, just submit me a claim.
Okay.
If you need 25,000, then I'll do the claim.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right?
Cool. I think it's an awesome idea to make it Steamboat Nights. The days are so hot in prior years, so I think it'll be a big success and more comfortable for everybody, get a bigger crowd.
Yes.
Great idea.
Is World Fest still this weekend as well, in Louisville?
The same weekend as this? I believe so, yes.
I actually think that's better doing it at night, because-
Hopefully, yeah, they'll come over the bridge and they come and enjoy the festival.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense to not have two daytime events going on at the same time, so I think this is good.
All right, thank you.
Was there any public comments? I'm excited for that. Come on. No.
Oh, all right.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
What time is it?
No.
Okay, then we will move on, find the council comments. Councilperson White.
No comment.
Councilperson, that's done.
No comment.
Councilperson Yon.
I have comments tonight. First thing is just a question about one of our ordinances tonight. On 2017 OR 50, on the title, it says it's 2006 OR 61, but then in the ordinance, it's 2000 OR 61, so I didn't-
Don't worry about that front page. I'm going to quit giving you all front pages.
Okay, I just saw, I wanted to make sure.
I only do that front page myself, so you all can have them separated. But I'm going to quit doing them, so you all can figure out how to get to your front page. We're going to have a new game on town. Let's guess the ordinance.
I just want to make sure that that was correct, okay.
So that was my mistake, and I will admit that.
I wasn't trying to call you out.
There won't be no more. You won't have a chance to make it.
Well, there you go, no more covers, sorry, guys. And then also, so I believe Vicki, a few weeks ago, sent out the information for the AIM Idea Summit, that's going to be in Evansville, so AIM is the new name for the, what was IACT, so the Indiana Association of Municipalities. They reached out to me and asked me to be a panelist for one of the discussions on hot topics in municipal government, so I'm excited to be representing Jeffersonville on that panel. But for those of you that don't know, it's, I think, October 10th through 12th, so I will definitely be there, but get with Vicki if you're interested in attending.
Well, I think they're going to ask you if you're interested.
Yeah, so the last time that I talked to James, he said that they are trying to figure it out, and that there's room still at the Doubletree, or, I'm sorry, at the Tropicana or-
I don't know, I haven't heard anything yet from them, so.
Yeah. He basically told me, like, we'll get it figured out, so, who knows? But it looks like it's going to be a really good summit. And then finally, so obviously, I am back from three weeks of being in India, and it was really interesting on a lot of levels. There is a severe drought, basically, for the past three years. It was supposed to be monsoon season, and it rained once while I was there for the three weeks. So one of the initiatives that the state that I was in, I was looking at, is using treated wastewater as water for farming and agriculture, which is just an interesting look at incorporating sustainability in their farming practices. So I did meet with their wastewater manager, and it was just really an interesting experience. Happy to be back, and I will say that some of the issues that we see on the council seem very small when you look at some of the issues that a country with almost 1 billion people are, are undergoing. So happy to be back, thankful for some of the issues that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, so. That's it.
Councilperson Maykel.
I'd like to wish firefighters Amy Wolf and Josh Stitt-
Really good.
You never say anything, and today you're going to steal my thunder.
If you ran in your district, I'd still be before you. Wish them luck. They traveled to Los Angeles today for the World Police and Fire Games. I think Amy won last year, if I remember right, so she lost a lot more weight than I can, and that's all I have.
Councilperson-
Excuse me, sir. Can you, who was it again, so we can get it through the minutes?
Amy Wolf and-
Amy Wolf and Josh Stitt.
Yeah.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Couple things. Be on the lookout. Of course, we can't say much about the specifics of it, but here shortly, I think we've reached a understanding with the police, the FOP, so all of you will be receiving something in an optus, I don't have a time frame for you, but soon. And if you have any questions about that, I'm sure Dustin, Scotty, myself, Lisa, ever call me if there's a concern or a question, we know it more than we ever thought we would at this point. So that'll be coming up really soon, so be on the lookout. And then I have a question for maybe Nathan, maybe Les, anybody else who's knowledgeable. Is there a general standard evaluation of how much it costs to incremental a project instead of doing it all at once? For example, do, is that just, you can figure you're going to spend 20% more if you do it all at one time?
No, boys. Andy's gone.
Andy would probably have to be more equipped to answer it. It sort of depends on the project and where we're at in the economy. I mean, obviously, during the, when the bridges were being built, cost of construction was on the higher end because there was demand. I know the Galbraith Farm Parkway redevelopment is doing that project in two phases. I can try to find out, but I'm sure JTL could-
Also, I can send Andy a message. It's not like I'm looking for, obviously, they're all different, but just as a general rule with, yeah, but I can say, thanks, Les. And that's it.
Councilperson Owen.
Shout out to the fire department again, as Mr. Maykel's mentioned. Appreciate their efforts in representing the city and our fire department. Also, the redevelopment commission met for a special meeting this afternoon, right before we had our picture. We approved a development plan that will be going to planning and zoning, I believe, next with Arc Construction. They have, they're doing the hotel on Mulberry, and next door, they will be building a multifamily complex that will be three stories, approximately 20 units, I think, is what they said. And then they will also be adding their professional office to the end of that building that they're going to occupy as the owner as well. So we approved that with them, that's very exciting. Again, three stories, not 40, like what everybody was, some people were afraid of. But then also, in that same meeting, we approved a purchase agreement with Waypoint Construction to redevelop the old American Legion property, yes. So they purchased the property for $775,000, I believe it was, and they're-
Van Boyden.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Van Boyden.
I have read reports of clubs being dynamited in the 60s, but-
Your old days.
Yeah, in the good old days. But, but that block will be redeveloped, they've entered their due diligence period, and we will move forward from there. That's all I have.
Councilperson Ellis.
Yeah, I would like to thank Paul Norgren and his employees for getting the picture and everything done for the wall of fame in such a short period of time. Paul, you've done a wonderful job on that. I thank you for what you've done on that, and I thank the council for approving the resolution, recognizing Andre. That's all I have.
Councilperson Samuel.
Yes, just an announcement, this Thursday, we're, the city folks with the- Yeah, it's just an announcement. This Thursday, we're, the city folks with the artists are installing four of the sculptural sidewalk sculptures that are on Allison Lane and Middle Road. To remind us, we, at the, the different places, we're along the long stretches of sidewalk, there's, there's a pad poured that has a bench, a bench, trashcan, and a pedestal that mimics the pedestals down at the Big Four Railroad, the former railroad bridge pedestals. And those who are going up Thursday, they're going to be really neat. And that's, that's part of our, that's the first part of our movable art. We're going to design all the bases the same when we do other places around where these pieces just can be unbolted and moved to other places and rotated. So, that's Thursday. I'm sure you'll see pictures.
They're all floral, being, or fun, or floral.
And Oak Park, folks in Oak Park participated in selecting the, the artists and the things, as well as Callie and some other folks. So, it was a real, real good thing. So, that's Thursday. You'll see pictures. I want to thank Ron for coordinating and bringing Andre's story to us. That's a great story, and I was really glad that the Little League team was here. That's good for them to get to see, see that. And then I'll just lastly thank Matt for the redevelopment update. We don't hear that very much, and, and I don't have the opportunity to go to the redevelopment meeting, so it's good to hear the positive projects. Thank you.
Okay, I'm hoping, just to now general update, because it was just general information on the meeting in Washington at the sewer department. They went, and it was a very good meeting, so that was, that was positive to hear that. So, if y'all have any questions or concerns, reach out to, to Lynn, or to Dale, or whatever, if you need to be briefed on that. Also, be watching your emails, please. I should have, be sending out that FOP contract in the next couple of days, because it, the goal is to have it on our next agenda for our next meeting. And then also, as you all know, Mr. Merkley let us know that we're looking to get our budget by next meeting. And on that note, was requesting, if you have your-
Maybe I'll start over now.
We started out with such a wonderful, positive meeting.
It all bounced into the light.
Yeah, okay. But on that note, Heather made the request that, as you all remember, on budget, we get our binders. If you know where that binder is, and if you'd please get that to her, she'd like to save some money in her budget and reuse those binders. And so, I told her that I would say that, and so, get it to her.
Just drop it off like sometime before the next meeting?
Anytime.
Actually, shoot her an email or a text or something, so she knows, so she knows how many to go out and buy, and she's not playing the waiting game like, oh, come on. Okay, that's all I have, so I will quietly take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Meeting is adjourned.